We do have the presence of a quorum. The meeting has been duly called and notice of the meeting has been posted for the time and manner required by law. First things first, I want to go back through and I want to introduce my fellow board members. For those of you who weren't here at the beginning of our meeting, starting over here on my right is Mrs. Grail James. Standing next to her is Mr. Dave Rosenthal. Mr. Jim Rice. Our Board Secretary, Addie Halliger. And last but not least, Mr. K. P. George. Missing this evening until here in a few minutes, the way I understand, is Mrs. Kristin Tosson, our Board President. My name is Jason Burdine, by the way, I'm the Vice President. She was in Austin today. The Governor appointed her to a Committee on Special Education, so she was in Austin advising our state government on special education. And so she will be joining us here in just a few minutes, but I would like for you to please stand for the presentation of colors and remain standing for the National Anthem Thank you all very much. Let's thank the Bush High School Navy Junior ROTC led by Captain Scott Everson for presenting I would also like to thank these Hodges Bend Middle School 8th grade students for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, all of whom were chosen for their leadership and involvement in community service. They've left on us now, but I'll go ahead and recognize them. Mr. Kenneth Manalang. Don't leave on us yet. Mr. Jeremiah Mutzbauer. Ms. Jocelyn St. Luce. And Lauren Patterson, excuse me. And finally, let's give a round of applause to the Bush High School Choir who led us in our National Anthem. All right, now we will begin our workshop.
Ladies and gentlemen, first of our information item, number 81. If there are first reports tonight, it can be on the page of our college and career readiness plan. I'm Mark, so I'm going to turn it over to the outside business.
Thank you. Good evening, Vice President Burdine, members of the Board, and Dr. Dupree. Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update regarding the Vision 2020 College and Career Readiness Plan. Tonight, the Executive Director, Troy Byrne, will be sharing data as noted on the screen. Can you click to the -- as noted on the screen, specifically pointing out the progress we've made associated with this data set, opportunities for growth that still exist, and more importantly, several ways that we use the data to assist students in planning for futures beyond what they can imagine. Some of those futures may include opportunities for post-secondary education at four-year universities, at two-year colleges, and/or industry certification that gets them out into the workforce. So at this time, I want to transition the presentation to Mr. Byrne, so he can share the specificity associated with the data.
Good evening, Board Members and Dr. Dupree. Thank you for allowing us to present the College and Career Readiness for 2018 this evening. I would like to point out the data that we used to compile this report for you tonight. We start off with PSAT 8 and 9, which we use the data from PSAT 8 and 9 for AP potential. There's a report that comes out to us and to the campuses that identify students who would be more than likely successful for one or more AP courses. That progresses to the PSAT NMSQT, the National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. That allows us to identify students early for the National Merit Scholarship. Of course, we progress that into the SAT and ACT. We also want to talk about tonight the progress of our AP courses, student enrollment, and how students are performing on the AP exam. Dual credit has been on the rise in the District 2, so we'll talk about our partnership with Houston Community College tonight. And we'll end the report with our trends that we see in CTE enrollment, and on top of that, student certification, how students are doing to earn industry-level certifications for CTE. We've identified multiple strengths within the data. One thing that's consistent in the data is that FBISD outperforms both Texas and the nation on PSAT, SAT, and ACT. We see an incredible growth in advanced placement, course enrollment, and dual credit enrollment. On top of that growth, student success in advanced placement, that's on an upward trend as well. The dual credit upward trend, we can attribute to our increased partnership with Houston Community College. Houston Community College provides our dual credit courses, and it's free of charge for our students. That includes books. Opportunities for growth that we see within the data, we wish to increase the student enrollment in advanced placement and dual credit. And I'll also talk to you tonight about research that we're doing into dual enrollment with UT Austin, and that's through OnRamps. Increased student achievement for the certifications, we see an upward trend in certification achievement. Tonight, I'll share with you that we have the ability to achieve 7,000 certifications, and we are paying for the first test if it's online certification for our students, so that will be free of charge for our students as well. We wish to close the student performance gaps that we see. As I share the data on the PSAT, NMSQT, SAT, and ACT, you'll see a noticeable gap in some of this data, and I'll share with you what we're doing to address the gap. We have the new CTE Center opening up in 2019. On top of that, we're building opportunities with employers in our community to start internships, externships. But then also, we want to build the dual credit enrollment, so we're looking at dual credit possibilities within CTE. And of course, we provided to you in the fall what we're doing with our individual student planning and how we're making that process more robust, starting in the 6th grade. I want to start off with the data with the end in mind, so if you look at this chart, I'll walk you all through it real quick. This comes from the National Clearing House, and this shows where do our students go after leaving Fort Bend ISD. If you look at the column on the left, that shows for the class of 2010, what happened with them in 2010-11. So 80.5% of our students enrolled in either a two-year or a four-year entity, but we still have about a little bit more than 19% of our students that are not identified in this Clearing House information. And I'll walk you through the progression of the data because we have multiple colors and coding within here. As we progress to 2016-17, you'll notice that the green turns orange. Those are the students that stay in college and persist. We have some new greens, so those are some students who didn't enroll the first time. Now they're coming in their second year out of high school. But then we have yellows show up, and yellow are students that do not persist in college and they have not achieved a degree. And then the purple at the top, those are the students that are not entering through the Clearing House data. So we know that they're entering either their career, their workforce immediately, or military, but that's not tracked through this report. And then finally, we want to look at 2016-17. So in seven years, what happened to the class of 2010? We can say that 53.3% achieved either a two-year or a four-year degree. We still have some students that are persisting and they're still in college. And then we have, you know, a large 24% that did not persist in college, and we want to address that piece of data right there. And then we still have 10% that we have to make assumptions, is it military, or did they go straight into the workforce? So to address this, we want to -- we're aligning to Texas's 60-by-30 Plan, I think many of us are aware of that. So Texas wants, by the year 2030, 60% of 24- to 35-year-olds to have either a two-year, a four-year, or a certification. And that's to enrich Texas financially. If they have these accreditations or credentials, we know that they'll be higher earning down the road. So we want to address why are students not persisting, and then what's happening with that 10%? The benefits to our students as we enhance their college preparedness in high school, even down to 6th grade, if we make them aware of PSAT, SAT, and ACT, what's on that test, how to prepare for the test, why is the test important early, they're going to perform much better down the road. We know from research that just being in an advanced course prepares them better for college, and they persist more throughout college, not only achieving the 3, 4, or 5 on an AP or finishing dual credit, being in the rigorous class prepares them for rigorous classwork down the road. And then keeping them within a CTE coherent sequence of courses prepares them for that certification when they get to that end course. The financial benefits are multiple, so we're paying for TSI for our seniors right now. Thank you for approving that. Earning AP credits for some colleges will allow students to earn credits in high school, and it depends on the college with AP. For dual credit, it's free to students, thank you Houston Community College, and whatever grade they get in that dual credit class is the grade that they're going to get on their transcript with Houston Community College. Of course, getting these students prepared allows them to enter colleges without having to take remedial courses. We don't want our students to enter college two-year or four-year and have to take a year or two in remedial courses, and that does not contribute to their plan. And finally, we want students to have these industry-level certifications so that when they do exit and they do graduate from FBISD, they can enter the workforce and they can have higher earnings and be more competitive with students from surrounding areas. So the first piece of data we're looking at, PSAT 8, 9, in 2013, College Board revamped how they're doing testing, and we gave you a two-year trend. We don't have a five-year trend for this quite yet, but you can see that over the past two years, our students are performing much better. PSAT, NMSQT, we do have both state and US to compare to. So compared to Texas and compared to the US, we're outperforming both as a district. But here's where we can see the gaps and the trends between our demographics. So, you know, our Asian students are performing at 1171, and then our African-American, we're at 923, and Hispanic, 942. So one of the ways that we're addressing this is we've increased AVID enrollment. We're increasing AVID across the district. Just as a reminder, AVID is advancement via individual determination. So in AVID, we teach students writing strategies, inquiry strategies, collaboration, organization, reading strategies, college readiness strategies, and then they learn how to tutor each other. They learn how to advocate for themselves. They learn how to ask questions of teachers in classrooms. It's a beautiful program, so that's one of the ways. Of course, we shared with you the individual student planning, where we want an actionable plan for every student when they graduate from FBISD. We've worked with curriculum, so CCR has met with our curriculum writers to make sure that the same ideas and topics and structures that we see on PSAT, SAT, ACT is also incorporated into our curriculum, so it's not a, wow, I've never seen this before on this test. I've seen it daily, if not weekly, within my classroom. Those are just some of the strategies that we're using to start closing those gaps. SAT, we see the same trends. This is math. Again, we outperform both Texas and the US, so we're doing very well there. SAT reading, we're outperforming Texas and the United States, same trends. And by the way, the trends that we're seeing here on the screen are the same trends we see across Texas and the same trends that we see across the nation. We just need to address those gaps better than the rest, which we already are doing. So we'll bring you new data next year and show you how we're closing that. ACT, we have just Texas, we don't have the nation for you, but you can see that we outperform Texas by considerable amount. And if I get a 23 on the ACT, I am now TSI-ready. So I know that we've talked about TSI testing. That takes something off the student's plate, and they can be TSI-ready through the ACT. And there's cut scores for SAT. If they're -- they get a 530, I believe, on one or the other for SAT, they're also TSI-ready. So one thing we do is we track students through this data, we look at the TSI readiness through these other venues, and that cuts down costs on TSI testing through the TSI test. So if we look at the advanced placement scores, we can see a considerable upward trend on student enrollment in advanced placement. And then we also see, we were kind of stagnant 2015-16, but we had an uptick in 2017, where we have over 8,000 students earning a 3, 4, or 5. And again, students would have to go to the College Board website, they would have to research the college that they want to go to. Depending on the college, I can get credit as a student if I received a 3. Some, you need to get a 4. Some, you need to get a 5. And some Ivy League, they say, that's great, you got a 5, you're still going to take our courses. So it depends on which college I want to go to as a student. Dual credit, and a considerable upward trend. And again, this is our MOU with Houston Community College. We do -- this is an area of growth for us as well. It has been considerable growth, but we can move this number up much more next year as we work with Houston Community College. Tonight on the agenda, you actually have an agenda item where we're recommending an MOU where they're coming out to work with our students, and they -- through PSOR, it's priority, student onboarding, and registration. We found that, looking through the National Clearing House, every high school, the top five schools that our students enroll, Houston Community College is one of them. So out of the top five for every one of our high schools, HCC they're going to go to. So HCC came to us, they said, we have a great idea, we'll pay for it, we can onboard your students early. Not only that, but we can get them TSI-ready as well, so we'll help you with that and identify how we can work with our students. So let's come back to the end in mind. We see college enrollment trend for FBISD has had a downward turn. We were at 75% in 2009, and now we're below the average at 69%. And so we have to question to ourselves, what's going on with this? What's going on in our environment? Are students choosing not to go to college because of its cost prohibitive? How can we help them with that? Are they just not ready? Or are they going into the workforce? And can we prepare them better to go into the workforce? So those are the questions we derive as we look at the data of, yes, this is what we get, but how do we act upon that? So that brings us into career and technical education. And if we're going to talk about the workforce, we want to make sure that the students are on a very direct career pathway, that they're getting hands-on applications, it's aligned to the workforce, and they can actually see all of the core academics that they're learning, how is it applied in the workforce? Work ethic, as they work in CTE, aligns with the profile of a graduate. So we see students showing the critical attributes of the profile as they go through CTE coursework, more so because it's all hands-on and application and real world. And then, of course, we want the students to have that certification at the end because it makes them more competitive when they leave us, and they have a higher potential to get higher earnings. And we've talked about, I believe we talked about CTOSOs in one of my presentations. So we have career and technical student organizations in multitudes through CTE. FFA is one of them, FBLA. Students have opportunities to lead other students within these organizations, and they're very structured around what they would do in a career. Here are the trends for our CTE enrollment. We broke it down by pathway for you all, by program area, and you can see that in ag, it's been stable, hovering around 1,500 for the past three years. Architecture has a slight uptick. Audio, video is on a downward trend. Business and marketing is kind of coming back up. Health science, huge uptick, and we would expect that in the Houston area, especially with our academy. And then hospitality and tourism, not a whole lot of kids are interested in that. Human services, it's staying stable around 1,900. IT, slight uptick. If you look at law and public safety, this is an interesting trend that we're looking at right now. So we're adding 500 student enrollment over the past two years, 500 and 500. That's an interesting progression, so we're looking at what avenues can we create to enhance the students' knowledge in law and public safety, if that's what they're interested in. Manufacturing is down, and of course STEM is booming with a slight uptick of 300, and transportation is stable. What certifications can our students get this year? So looking at the data and where the students are at and which courses, this adds up to roughly 7,000 certifications that are possible this school year. So students are in the classes, they're learning what will be on these certification tests, and again, if it's online, we will be paying for the first time that the students would take the exam. With James Reese Career and Technical Center opening in 2019, we're looking at dual credit opportunities, HVAC, electrical. We also had teaching. There's multiple pathways that our students can get dual credit through CTE. Once the James Reese Center opens up, they'll have the resources and the physical classroom needed for those dual credit classes. It's not just the teacher certification to teach the class, it's the actual equipment in the class that allows us to provide dual credit. And then increase the number of business and industry partners, we're doing that right now as we open up this academy, so we're reaching out to people for branding, we're reaching out to people for internships, externships, and that should help our students also build out the profile of a graduate as they work with our partners. So next steps, as I said, we're partnering with our curriculum partners in teaching and learning to ensure that what we see on these national exams is also found in the curriculum, so our teachers have easy access, students have access, all of that's loaded into Schoology. We're using this data through the PSAT SAT portal to identify students with AP potential. That allows us to pre-enroll students into advanced placement. Team College is something going on through CCR, it's another task force that we've created. How can we enrich what we're already doing? How do we increase pre-AP enrollment? Individual student planning, we presented that to you all in the fall. And then UT OnRamps is a new thing from UT that started about three years ago, and UT has the state of Texas paying for it, so every biennium, they approach the state and say, will you pay for this again? So as a district, if we choose to go into OnRamps for dual enrollment, it's already paid for for this biennium, this year and next year. And then the following year, we would have to see how much that is. In a prior district, we priced it out, just in case it wasn't paid for by the state, and for a district comparable to this, it was about $100,000, $120,000. It wasn't too cost prohibitive. Expanding AVID, we already have a plan where we're expanding out to the middle schools and making sure that each school that is AVID is 10% or higher, because that is an AVID goal. Khan Academy is pieced into PSAT/SAT, so we want to increase student usage through awareness. Some just weren't aware that they had access to it, and it has a lot of test prep that the students can do online. We're also sharing that with our parents at the parent nights, our college nights that we've had. We had STEAM Fest this past Saturday, I believe we had over 4,000 people visit STEAM on Saturday, it was an incredible success. And early college high schools, we don't have any in the district, however, we did apply for three. So we applied for Willeridge, Marshall, and Hightower for early college high school, and the state will let us know in the spring where we're at on those three. TSI testing, of course, you all approved for us to TSI-test our seniors, so that reduces costs for our students. Once they're TSI-ready, the remedial courses fall off the radar, and they could just jump into their degree plans. into their degree plans. So to sum it up, we do have incredible growth and success in FBISD. We have beaten the state of Texas and United States on the national exams. However, we know that gaps exist, and we need to do a better job to reach out and address all of our student populations. Advanced Placement, we've had incredible growth. We see the same trend happening next year with Advanced Placement. Dual credit, I'm predicting we'll get even more, if not 50%, 100% growth on dual credit. Depends on how we piece it out down the road and partner up with HCC. And then new initiatives, early college, UT Onramps. Tonight on your agenda, you have the HCC PSOR project, which is student onboarding and admission early as they're seniors. And finally, we have the CTE Center, which will allow us to do more robust CTE and dual credit CTE. And I know that was a long report, and I apologize, but thank you for allowing me to present tonight. At this time, I would like to take any questions from the board.
Thank you, Mr. Mark. I appreciate all the information. Is there any further questions?
Thank you for the presentation and I appreciate the information. I have a couple of questions. Apparently, I have a question about the ability for us to always take one class and do this thing. What is the limit of the capacity on that?
There's a new Senate bill that limits the number of dual credit courses a student can take unless we're in an early college high school. And I believe that's happening across the state because they've opened up considerable amount of early college high schools at a fast rate, and they're not seeing student success. So with the application this year for the three early college high schools, there's a new blueprint. And the blueprint is different than the old blueprint, because we first have to apply for a zero year. And the zero year invites a technical assistance provider to come out and work with us to see if we have the ability to actually do what we say we're going to do. It can't just be an application process. We have to have the teachers in place, the administration in place. What are we doing to enroll students? And if it's an early college high school, we should be addressing at-risk students. So part of the rubric as a district that we would need to use is, are we identifying students who more than likely, if we did not intervene, would not have a good chance of going off to college?
Well, when I was looking at, I think I was still graduating from college, I had opportunity to go back to my university, go up to somebody who, even though I graduated last year, if I needed to, I could go back and start starting the placement and all kinds of things. So when we talk about the early college high schools and looking at some of the students that we had around tracking our students and saw the decline, I think, in our student background, it was, even if we were to have thought on the view for us to have some type of service or even if it's a partnership or a community or something like that, we would support our students and students, talk about that, maybe go back. It has to come from a false start. My question, we don't know how to do it at the time of day and how we get them back in class, you know? Sometimes the, I, I'm working, I think, yeah. And so, they're like, we both kind of were there, I looked at, even more of the students going to HCC sometimes, I go here, I go here, I go there, or we can go back here.
Just a thought and ideal, you know, as we look at some of those, the trends and the numbers that we just saw today.
Okay. From what I'm understanding is, once students are in college, how do we help them persist?
Not necessarily college. I'm just talking about after you graduated, right? And, I mean, you talked about tonight how some kids, let me go back to that page so I'm clear, because I can't see that. What page are you doing on?
Third one.
Huh? It's page four? Yes, page four. So in page four, we saw an increase in kids that are no longer enrolled and are not graduated. We saw an increase in return. I'm not sure what after stop-out is, but just our trends are going differently, in the opposite direction. So how do we get a kid that, you know, may have went to school the first time and maybe I found out that it's not really, college is not for me, I didn't know about CTE classes or I didn't enroll into CT classes, somebody just to kind of help me get back on track? And I mean, for maybe like a five-year, three-year, I don't know, just some type of period of time to help support our students with that process?
Well, I know that we don't have anything in place to help students once they leave us.
I know. That's what I'm asking.
But we're trying to get ahead of the game. So with the HCC PSOR, that is really the intent of...
Troy, I think the question is, can we set up some type of system where a kid who is two or three years out, who may need help, could we create almost like a placement service or support service that allows them to come back? Maybe they're maturing and they realize, "I really screwed up my first year out of high school. I want to go back and get support from the system that I graduated from." Is that something we could consider? Or is that...
We could definitely consider it. And I haven't heard of anything like that, but we are transformational learning, so we can definitely look into creating something and piloting it.
Even if it's a dual, sorry, even if it's a partnership with Houston Community College or even like the CTE, you know, is that something that we could utilize in the evening for some of our kids to go back and do some type of trade? I mean, I'm just wanting, we've got these facilities, these first-class facilities. Could we explore doing some things like that? Sorry.
And I would say that, that, um...
No.
No.
My green light, there we go. I would say that this venture that we're looking at with Houston Community College is specifically for us to target some of our students who are traditionally underrepresented because TSI is somewhat of a gatekeeper. And if they're not TSI-ready, what can we do? So within our system, we can begin to proactively address that so that we, so this partnership with HCC would allow us to have counselors and advisors from HCC that would come to work with that specific student population, help them get TSI-ready so that they would be well-positioned for success with HCC. Now, as we begin that partnership with them to work with all of our students and specifically target these, I think that we can begin to have conversations with them about, so as we begin to identify these students, we streamline the registration process and we funnel them to your system. Can we develop safety nets as part of that partnership so that we can ensure their success and they don't have the issues that you've described in terms of, "Well, I didn't make good decisions. I've had difficulty with success my first year in." So I definitely think that as we begin this partnership, we can begin conversations to expand that so that as we funnel the kids in, we can develop those safety nets.
Correct. And so that's one piece of it. So then the other piece of it will be utilizing our CTE. I mean, we're utilizing during the daytime, what can we do in the evening time around those, just those facilities? I mean, we've got, we're building world-class facilities that can be utilized by our students.
Eddie, what my takeaway from your question, I think that ties with what Deanna's addressing, is we're going to be developing an adult education program in the district where we offer a different variety of classes for community education. So that's the kind of thing, I think, because without the question I keep hearing, is every college, you can always go back and get support when you graduate and get support with job placement and resources. I mean, that's what I hear you saying, is what do we do? What kind of classes could we offer if a kid wants to come back and get a certification? And what kind of things, how can they learn more about preparing if they've been out a while and they want to come back and take the ACT when they're 22-years-old? How can we do prep courses for them to support them and get some counseling and coaching? I think there's a lot of things we can do through the adult education, community education program that would be very structured, using the facilities, after-hours, and those kinds of things. It'd be a good additional level of support.
If I can just jump in. So I agree, Eddie, with what you're saying. And thank you, Dr. Dupree, for clarifying. And Ms. Saavedra, I appreciate what you said. I just want to add that we also, I believe, have a partnership with Texas State Technical College, which didn't get brought up tonight. But that's an awesome partnership, maybe that we could expand to work in some of these things that you all are talking about, because some of those programs, I think, are relevant to some of our students. So I just wanted to throw that out so it didn't get mentioned tonight. And then the second thing that, several meetings ago, maybe a year ago now, we talked about Naviance and its availability to students a year out. In other words, we're having the kids, when they're in school, develop their resumes and keep track of their applications and things like that. So to me, that's a resource center where we're already starting kids on using that. And if we're going to continue with that, then that needs to, we need to have some accessibility to them, or that information has to transfer into this HCC partnership, because it needs to be streamlined for the kids so when they first come back and say, "Okay, I tried a year at college, it didn't work out," or "I got a, had a job, but I realized I really need an industry certification, and now what do I do?" And that's, I think, the gap that we need to fill a little bit. So I'm excited about these ideas, and thank you for giving us a chance to talk about them.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Do we have any other questions from the board? Mrs. Tosin?
So thank you for having me late this evening. I appreciate everybody's flexibility with that. And I had reviewed some of this before this evening, and my question is, it's sort of along the same lines, but it's specifically with regard to our students with disabilities. We're in the process of transitioning with my daughter right now, and these were some of the questions I had at her ARD. I know we have Project Search, which is a very good, very robust program for our students with disabilities, but it specifically targets those who are really not in class, you know, in class anymore. It would be for sort of those fifth-year students. And so my question is around, how are we utilizing CTE for our students with special needs? Are we making sure that we have programs for them and especially certification-type programs? Because it is especially a way for students with disabilities who may not go on to a four-year college or a two-year community college. But of course, we want them to be contributing members of our community. Hey, Dina! And so I want to know, are we thinking about that? Have we considered that? Are we considering certifications and those types of things through our CTE program and otherwise?
Good evening. We have been working very closely with the Career and Technology Department. Certainly Meredith and our directors collaborate. One of the things that we, we do have more than just the Project Search. So our Project Search and our services for students beyond 18, we really try to, in that junior and senior year, start thinking about, first of all, we want to include our students as much as possible in the regular Career and Technology Program. And if they can't participate without any accommodations, then what kind of supports can we give them to maintain that? Some of the industry certifications, we have, our hands are tied, because obviously we can't force some of those entities to change the certification process. But we certainly feel that it's important that our students are still able to access those services and perhaps walk away from, you know, when they leave high school with the skill level to work as, to work in those different environments, whether they have a certification or whether we need to provide some job training and hands-on learning in those environments. So we take, I mean, some of our students, whether we go to Project Search or whether we're going into a regular work environment or whether we're going into a vocational type of environment, we will do that whether it's in 11th grade, 12th grade, or beyond their traditional four years, until they're able to get to a location in which it's, they have the skill level to either work or transition into another vocational, you know, placement or even go on to a regular or two-year college.
Okay, so that's good. And two suggestions I would make. One is make sure that our campuses know what opportunities that we have, because I don't think that they all do know or fully understand, particularly when they're in those junior and senior years and you're going to those ARD meetings. I think we need to make sure that we're giving parents all of that information. And secondly, as you know, Texas A&amp;M has a certification program for students with intellectual disabilities. And so I think it would be worth looking into, how can we partner with them or partner with other universities that do offer those certifications? Whether it be prep work towards that or are there certifications that we could begin offering in partnership, you know, with one of those universities? I think that would be worth exploring as well.
I know we have reached out to some local community college, but absolutely U of H. I know that SAM, I think, is establishing a program at SAM Houston. So, you know, Texas A&amp;M has a certification program for students with disabilities where they go and live.
Right.
And they can stay on campus for two years and then graduate with a certification. So that's a great idea, and I would, you know, we will definitely do that, as far as especially U of H and some of the local colleges here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Tosin. Mr. George, do you have a question?
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. Couple of questions, actually, especially as far as, you know, bridging the gap among African-Americans and Latino students. You said we are going to expand AVID programs, you know, into middle schools. My question is, is that enough? You know, are we doing enough to bridge that gap?
Well, what I would also like to address, AVID is one opportunity for us to work with students and get them, you know, develop their college readiness level. But in addition to that, something that we're doing, that we've not done in the past, is collaborating, the Counseling and Post-Secondary Readiness Team is collaborating very closely with our Teaching and Learning Group. And as we look at our priority standards and we look at developing learning progressions as we're developing the curriculum, we're also looking at that not just through the lens of what the standards say, but also in terms of, what does that look like in an SAT environment, in an ACT environment? And what are the skills that students need to acquire to be able to perform well on those assessments? And so we are collaborating very closely to develop learning experiences that are aligned to, for example, if the new SAT requires students to read critically, but also to provide evidence of how they came to their answer, then we want to develop learning experiences in our curriculum that have students performing in that way on a regular basis so that they acquire those skills. That's not only beneficial for them to perform well on the ACT or the SAT, but it really develops their level of college readiness for them to succeed in any arena that they choose to pursue. So I think that more importantly, I mean, and that certainly feeds into AVID, but more importantly, I think that step is really providing that level of opportunity and that rigor of instruction that we need to get our students ready and prepped for college or otherwise.
Okay. Excuse me. And also, I'm, excuse me. I'm a big believer of dual credit enrollment. Of course, we have an exclusive relationship with HCC now. Like Ms. Tosin was saying, you know, are we already looking into other institutions like U of H, A&amp;M, and UT and colleges like that?
Yes, sir. I think I just got turned off. We're looking into, the UT Onramps would be with UT Austin, but I've also talked with Steve Shields to look into Lone Star to also see what dual credit offerings we can... offer through there. Of course, as we do the dual credit enrollment through CTE, we're going to have to reach out to different partnerships, depending on the specificity of those dual credit enrollments. But that is on our radar, and in the background, we're reaching out to different entities.
Okay. And one last thing is, I see about program areas where, when it comes to information technology, which is kind of the future.
Yes.
And there are hundreds and thousands of jobs that are created, but there is, these numbers doesn't show there is a major interest in that area. I don't know, it is because it is overlapping with STEM.
Right.
What do we do? And because, you know, these jobs are highly paid, and you know, there's always a shortage. So how do we train our students, or create an interest in that area?
Well, one opportunity would be, like what we did this Saturday with STEAM, when we invited our community out, showed them what do we offer within our courses at the high school level. But you do find that the students are studying IT through the different academy structures. We offer computer science classes, networking and all of that. Through current structures, it's just students are opting to choose a different identification. They're identifying with STEM, they're not identifying with IT. Even in the medical science, they're identifying with medical science, but they'll be researching IT and those services through medical.
I would say some of the ways that we're proactively addressing that, not necessarily just waiting for them to pursue those interests at the high school level, we're, again, this is a curriculum initiative, as we look at our technical applications standards, we're looking to align those and embed those in the four core areas, so that we begin, at the kindergarten level, developing learning experiences associated with coding and robotics, so that we're beginning that at the kindergarten level. What does that look like in Kinder? What does that look like in first? And all the way as they matriculate to the system, so that we're funneling them to computer science opportunities, and all of those other opportunities associated with avenues for IT. So it's not something that we can wait for, as we've done, for them to get to the secondary. We really have to work through that process, beginning early in kindergarten. You know, as you know, we've got our robotics clubs, but when we went through our reorganization with the Teaching and Learning Division, we created that whole technology strand, so that we could formalize our programs in that area. And that's the work that we're doing now, so that we can begin that launch in 18, 19.
Sure. I'm so excited to see these robotic clubs in elementary school level. Actually, my wife is a trainer, you know. She come and tell me, our children are so excited to be part of this discussion. And do we have that in every elementary school, or just, we are just?
Well, right now, as, I believe that we reported that to the board, we've got 40 elementaries at this time. By next year, we will have all 50 of our elementaries that are represented with a coding and robotics club. In addition to that, we're expanding our middle school programming, so that we can address that as well, so that we can provide those opportunities at the middle school level. But I would say that a big systemic push is to begin to embed those pieces in the curriculum, beginning with Kinder, so that we're not waiting until they get to even middle school. That we are beginning, that messaging and those opportunities are being solidified as early as kindergarten.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Burn.
Thank you, Mr. George. So I had just a few quick comments and questions. Big win on dual credit, slide number 12. Just really quick, what has been the biggest contributor to that success? If I'm doing my numbers right, that's about a 400% growth.
The biggest contributor to this success is our partnership with the HCC. So, in previous years, students had to pay for dual credit through Wharton County. When we partnered with Houston Community College, they said, "We'll take care of the cost, including textbooks." So of course, students chose to take dual credit versus advanced placement. And it's a choice, you know, some students know they're going to stay in Texas and stay local, and they purposely take dual credit, so that they could get some credits out of the way. Some students want more flexibility, and they take the advanced placement. With the test, the three, four, or five, now they have more choice.
Thank you. And then, my next is, you'd mentioned 7,000 certifications. I assume we're able to do that with fidelity through technology, is that right?
We can message to them with fidelity to take the test. They still have to be successful on those certification exams. So this is certification potential.
Okay.
And previous years, we've been around 3,000 certifications. So we have considerable buffer zone to go from those numbers we've had in the past to 7,000.
Great. And then, my last question is, is the designation for being a early college high school, what does that mean to us as a district?
For us as a district, our students would be able to earn an associate before they graduate from Fort Bend ISD. Previous early college high schools that I've worked with, many of our students graduated with an associate as juniors. And then we had to partner up with the local college, so that they continue their third and fourth year. So it's a huge cost savings to parents, huge cost savings to the students, but then, from the student point of view, it's a time saver, too. So I'm getting two years of college completed before I graduate, and in some cases, three. To become early college high school, we would have to go through that zero year, where we have the TAP working with us. Then, once we go into year one, we can brand ourselves early college high school, but we're not deemed an early college high school, until that first cohort graduates four years down the road. In that case, five years down the road.
Great. Well, I look forward to our future success in that, and thank you for everything. Are we good with questions, team? Good. Well, thank you, I appreciate your presentation, Mr. Byrne. On to the next information, item B1, our Bond Oversight Committee update. Dr. Dupree?
Yes, sir. As you know, every time the Bond Oversight Committee meets, we follow up with an opportunity to update the board, giving them the same presentation we share with the Bond Oversight Committee. So I'm going to, we're going to get started tonight, who's going to begin?
We're going to start with Mr. Jacobson, and let him.
Very good. So annually, we invite the Chair of the Bond Oversight Committee to come and speak to the board about the work of the committee as well. So Stuart Jacobson is the current Chair, and we want to express our appreciation to all the members, but especially to Mr. Jacobson and his support and leadership of this important effort.
Mr. Jacobson needs a microphone. Oh, sorry. Thank you, Jane.
Good evening. My name is Stuart Jacobson, and I currently serve as the Chairman of the Bond Oversight Committee. Good evening, trustees, Dr. Dupree, staff, and honored guests. The Bond Oversight Committee of the Fort Bend Independent School District was created by the Fort Bend ISD Board of Trustees as an adjunct to the 2014 bond issue. The Bond Oversight Committee is composed of district taxpayers chosen by trustees for their expertise in certain professions and disciplines related to the issuance of municipal bonds, the design of district facilities, and the construction of those facilities. Among BOC members are architects, engineers, construction managers, contractors, materials suppliers, accountants, bankers, investment advisors, and others. The Bond Oversight Committee initially met in advance of the trustee approval of the 2014 bond issue, to give input into the size and composition of the first phase of the district's multi-phase capital plan. Input received from the BOC assisted the Fort Bend ISD executive team in delineating the phases of the capital plan, which will be used for future bond planning. Since approval by the district taxpayers in the bond election, the BOC has met at least quarterly. At BOC meetings, district executives and consultants apprise the BOC of, among other things, the scope and details of projects that are included in the bond issue, the timeliness and sub-time, the timelines and sub-timelines of each project, progress reports on projects broken into several subcategories, construction management, technology, communication on progress of the bond, security, and financial. Members of the Bond Oversight Committee freely inquire into all aspects of the project. All inquiries are answered openly and eagerly and professionally by the FBIS team and its consultants. To date, the BOC has developed a congenial, yet arms-length, relationship with the FBIST team. Quite often, additional taxpayers, trustees, and other members of the public will attend these meetings. As the work of the 2014 bond gets closer to the end, the goals for the BOC for 2018 are to continue to provide oversight of the 2014 bond proceeds on behalf of FBIST taxpayers, to be a resource to FBIST staff and consultants where appropriate, including commenting on issues or changes that may arise, provide input for the benefit of the taxpayers, trustees, and staff on future bond considerations. The BOC will start meeting monthly as of March to discuss any possible future bonds. We will also determine which BOC members will roll off the committee, and which ones will have the capacity to continue with any possible future work. May I answer any questions about the Bond Oversight Committee?
Do we have any questions? Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. George.
I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you for the committee's work, and, you know, I kind of watched a little bit, you know, I know some people in it, and I have conversations with them, and it's absolutely, you guys are doing phenomenal work, and thank you for doing that. Appreciate it.
That's very kind of you. It's actually quite a pleasure to do the work for the district. All of you are the ones who really put in the effort, the staff and the trustees, so we thank you as well for all your work. Anything else?
I wanted to say thank you again. So, as a board, we appreciate all your hard work, and we do rely on the information that you do bring to us. And I think we've got a great organization that you've been the chair of, and I look forward to the future success and the hard work that you all are doing, so.
Right. We'll try not to let you down.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah? Mr. Bassett, you next?
Yes, I am. Okay, so we have the presentation that we gave to the BOC the other day, unedited, it was our shortest one, 26 slides. So we've actually gotten into, you know, quite a rhythm. We're not necessarily going to go slide by slide with you all, because there was the briefing that we gave to you with regard to the planning that we did, that Beth went through with the board in November, for bond planning and the facility planning and such. The BOC hadn't seen that yet, so that was the first part of the presentation. But every time that we meet, gosh, I don't know if I'm, did it go? Or maybe I had to turn it on, how about that? Sorry. Okay, all right. So, I mean, it's an extensive agenda, and all of the experts speak, and so as we go, as we go through, Carolina and I are basically going to do, try to do most of the talking, but if there's a question that comes up that, you know, longer, someone else needs to chime in, we'll do that. But as you can see, we go through, you know, quite a bit of detail. The first several slides, again, we did go through these in the November meeting with Beth. We're going through the Facility Master Plan, Capital Plan, and everything that we're trying to do to prepare for Bond 2018, developing the Facility Master Plan, they've had two meetings for that already. Stop me if you want to on any of these. The next one is developing the Master Plan, working through that, and then the Capital Plan will be after that. We spent some time with them, going through the timeline that we had, and so luckily, you have this in front of you in terms of, you know, in your slide deck. And so, we are on track, we're going to have our first meeting to talk really just about 2018 with the BOC in March. And so, right now, we're on track to, you know, to meet these guidelines, but there's a lot of work to do between now and whenever the board would approve a potential election in November. At the time, we reminded the BOC what we're looking at in terms of projects that would be done and started, potentially started before Bond 2018 would be passed. So Elementary 51 is something we certainly knew long ago about, whenever we were sizing the bond, we knew that when Elementary 51 would get started, we didn't include that in Bond 2014, but we would need to start it before Bond 2018 was done. And we're handling that basically the same way that we handle Sullivan. We did most of the building and funding for Sullivan before Bond 2014 was passed, and hopefully, we'll be doing the same thing with Bond 2018. We're going to have, you know, design fees work needs to be done on many of our campuses for HVAC systems. And then, we also think we need to do some facility enhancements, especially at the stadiums, to make sure that some things are taken care of before football season starts.
Okay. Ms. next, you're next.
Good evening. So this is the org chart that we had previously presented to you, nothing has really changed. What we do want to let you know is that we're working on putting together the RFQ package, so that we can select and start working on selecting the company that's going to help us for the upcoming bond. We want to have all this ready, so that by the time the bond passes, we can just sign and execute the contract and get to work quickly. So this is the program summary update for Bond 2014. As you can see, out of the $484 million, we have committed $381 million, and we have executed and completed $314 million. On the status for the program, we have completed about 79% of it. On Phase 1, as you can see, we have eight campuses that are closing out, and so, in under warranty, on Phase 2, all of our campuses are under construction, the 36 campuses under Phase 2. And on the Phase 3 of the bond, we have one campus complete, and we are currently negotiating 29 campuses. As for the next steps for Phase 1, we want to concentrate on closing out the projects and the warranty piece for those. On Phase 2, we truly want to stay on schedule and complete that construction. And for Phase 3, we want to finalize the bid and negotiation portion of those projects and continue with construction. For our projected program budget, we have $381 million under commitments, then we have another $87 million with estimates and pending change orders routing through the system right now. And so, with a total budget of $484 million, we show a projected bond program balance of $15.5 million. For our classroom additions, we completed everything except Holly Elementary School. We experienced a few delays after Harvey in this project, but as of today, it is completed, activation has been completed. Then we have the CTE. For this one, we had the groundbreaking ceremony back in November. We're working on drill pier installation. We have experienced a bit of a delay on the drill piers and its installation, but we're continuing to work with a contractor on finding out ways to expedite that schedule, so that we can stay on track.
So what you see there is the current status of all of the wireless with the various campuses. Takes you to page 18. This will take us down to about 14 campuses left. Of those 14 campuses, Colony, Ben, and Seguin will not be done, because we're waiting for construction on a new equipment room. We're pretty much estimated that we will be able to meet the completion of the Wi-Fi by the end of summer 2018. Security camera, we completed all Phase 1 campuses, and then cameras are being installed in Phase 2. And as for storage, we have installed about three petabytes, if you think about what you have at home, one petabyte, that's 3,000 of those hard drives that we install. So, that's quite a lot, but we estimate that we need about one or two more petabytes in order to accommodate. And then as for the budget itself, we're tracking well with the main budget. We have spent about 76 and committed about 76% of the fund.
We share with the committee an update on what we're doing for communications to publicize the success of the 2014 bond. We maintain all of the information on the website and in the last issue of Fort Bend News Magazine, we had a two-page feature on the CTE center and its progress. And then we also, for the classroom additions, worked with the campuses as they had individualized ground breakings and other celebrations, or not ground breakings, but ribbon cuttings and other celebrations to welcome kids into their new space.
Okay, so for our small business initiative, as you can see here, we have awarded $277 million in construction contracts. Out of the 277 million, we have awarded $67 million for small business contractors. This shows we're at 24.2% when our board goal is 25. We are really close to that goal today. Out of the $67 million that we have awarded for small businesses, we have paid out to date $40 million. We wanted to show you here where we are with our initiative and what we did last year, 2017. And so we held nine workshops throughout the year and we had participation of 806 people or companies that attended our workshops. With that, throughout the year, we accomplished a vendor registration of 1,400, so 1,400 new vendors registered with us last year. And what we're doing starting 2018 is we're making changes and some adjustments to our SBE so that we can improve and do better. What we're doing now is we're adjusting so that we host these workshops quarterly. We're going to have four of those workshops where we have... We're going to concentrate a lot more into the connection between the general contractor and the subcontractors and the subconsultants. That is truly where we pick up the small businesses. And so we want to pay more attention to that on our workshops. We have now implemented and will be working this year on focus groups. These are smaller groups we're going to be holding throughout the year. We have scheduled five for the 2018 year to where we sit down with 10 to 15 subs at a time. We can talk to them and educate them on how to register, how to join Fort Bend and how to eventually make it through to work with us. We also found the gap on tracking and how we track our data. We are working for the following year to track, to better track the data so that we can tell you out of the 1,400 new vendors we acquired, how many of those are construction-related? How many of those are in the mechanical trade or electrical trade and so forth? So we are making some adjustments this year to improve on that tracking as well.
Okay. So we get to... Sorry, we get to my favorite subject, debt management. Big takeaways. The big takeaways from this is that we're maintaining our AA+ rating. We have a very favorable debt schedule in comparison to most of our peer districts with over 93% of our debt will mature within 20 years. So it's very, very strong, very strong profile. I did spend a little bit of time with the BOC just talking about our variable rate debt, which is still well below our 25% threshold. You know, we're at the 17.8% of our total debt is variable rate. And so you can see how the variable rate is laddered and how it'll mature out through the next four years. So you have a portion due in 2018, 2019, 2021. And so what that does, that helps us mitigate interest rate risk by having things laddered out. And so, you know, depending on what's going on with the market at that time, we're able to have things spread out. So that's definitely best practice to do things that way. One thing that, when we were first looking at this, we thought that whenever the board authorized us to pay off $11 million of debt early, that we would focus on the variable rate debt of the next 33 that was going to be coming up for remarketing. Well, one of the things we need to look at is it may make sense for us to apply that somewhere else where we're paying a higher interest rate. And so we're going to look at that and if, talking with bond counselor and our financial advisor, if that's something that they're suggesting, we may bring something back to you to help us with that decision. So our planned transactions, yes, I'm on that. So, we still have the CT Center, which is a $60 million taxable. We are going through the commercial paper, so we're in the middle of our third tranche of the commercial paper. We've gone through it twice. We're in the middle of the third one. Whenever this was, slide was created, we were at $40 million outstanding commercial paper. Now we have $45 million outstanding of the commercial paper. We do need to remarket the 2015 variable rate that I mentioned. And then we have the current refunding of the 2008 bonds. So just remember, in the Tax Reform Act that we just recently had, advanced refundings were disallowed, not current refundings. And so this is a current refunding because our bonds that were issued in 2008 had a 10-year call. And so because of that 10-year call, 2018 would come up and so we are able to refund those on a current basis, which is certainly permissible within the current tax laws. And so we'll be going through that. Now, instead of having four transactions, we're going to try to save on our fees and we're going to have three transactions. And so we'll manage that by splitting up the commercial paper. We'll use whatever we... We're going to refund the 2008 bonds in May and whatever we have outstanding in commercial paper at that time, we'll add to that transaction. And then we will add the rest of the commercial paper up to the 100 whenever we do the CT Center. And then we'll start rolling the commercial paper again and that'll be used, we'll be needing that whenever we start working through all of the bond projects that'll be done this summer. And so that's... So we're going to go from four transactions down to three to help keep our debt issuance costs lower. And that is it. Be happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. First off, before we start questions, I wanted to thank Mr. Pham, Mrs. Fuzzetti, Mr. Bassett, Mr. Perez and Mrs. Sofer for your presentation. Board members, do we have any questions? Mrs. James?
Thank you, Mr. Verdine. So my questions, or one question, Mr. Bassett, is on the last slide. When you talk about remarketing the 2015 bonds, there are variable rates that they don't fall under, even though they're due to mature in 2025 or '22, they don't fall into the disallowed refunding category?
That's right. I mean, this is a variable rate and it's expected whenever we did issue those, they were going to be due at that time. So we have to remarket those. And so they don't, it's not the same as the refunding of other bonds.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. And then, Mrs. Fuzzetti, I had a question on slide 21. The picture that you showed there of the small business enterprise that were paid to date 60%, does that mean we're still expecting another $27 million in contracts to be paid out as these projects finish up? Or that means that some of the contractors have changed the subs that they're working with?
No, we have not changed subs. We just, we are still executing work, so we still have to pay $27 million.
Okay, so we're not, it's not going to lower our overall percentage? Okay. That's great. And then I guess my last question is on slide 13. And that has to do with the estimated and pending change orders. So it's, you've got a number there that's 87.3 million. Is that the number that's been approved by the Board of Trustees? Mr. Bassett, I guess this is questions for you or for Mr. Perez. Is this the number that's been approved by the Board of Trustees or how would you describe that number?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct. That number is approved.
Okay, so that's the amount that we've approved. You don't necessarily think that we're going to use it all, but you think that, but that's the approved amount?
Correct. So those are, the pending change orders are, they're possible change orders, but we keep track of all those. And so none of them, if the money's going to be expended, it would come to the board for approval before that money would be expended, but we keep track of that so that we always know where we are.
Okay, so the reason I'm asking this is I thought in each of the projects that we were approving, and a contingency amount, right? So we're approving, is that, the contingency amounts are in the row A there? And then row B is additional things that you think are going to happen? I'm, I need some help understanding this chart.
Yes, ma'am. So in B, what that is, that is change orders that have already either been approved by the board or we see as potential and so we're keeping track of that money so we know. But all of that money is within what you just described, it's within the budget approvals that y'all have made and there's those contingencies, all of that money is accounted within that. So it's not, I guess what I'm trying to say is it's not money that's going to go beyond the monies that we have for Bond 2014. It's all included within Bond 2014, but we're just, we're tracking, they're either change orders that have been approved and committed or change orders that could possibly be coming to the board at a later time.
Oscar, it might be helpful to talk through lines A through D to describe what's in each of those lines.
Okay, so...
I'll let Carolina go through that.
All right, so line A, current commitments, we have already issued contracts. So that's money that we've committed with contracts and POs. Line B, estimates and pending change orders. So estimates are those projects in Phase 3 that have not been approved by the board. So we're still negotiating with the contractors and that's why we call them estimates, because those numbers are still in negotiations and we have not presented to you guys for approval. Pending change orders, those are change orders that have been approved by DePree or myself or Oscar, depending on the amounts, but they're going through the system and have not been executed as change orders to the contract. So they are still going through our system. They have not been issued as formal change orders to the contractor, but it's money that we've committed.
And then, so I see that the next line is A plus B. What's the number that the board has approved? If you, if I were to say, what, how many million dollars have, has, in contracts and contingency, has the board approved? Is that a number that's on that chart?
So, $484 million is our total budget for the bond.
Right.
You have fully approved line A. Line B is still within the project budget, so you guys have approved that amount as well.
Okay, I'm just listening and trying to learn. Okay. But it's not the total amount that we've approved, it's an amount. It's what you guys estimate it to be.
Correct.
Okay.
So I want to clarify, because the way I would answer that question, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, Carolina, is the board has approved all the contracts on line A.
Correct.
They have not approved the estimates on line B because that was approved by the voters as an estimate, but it's not a contract that the board has yet approved.
So they have not approved a contract? Yes, but we're still, those estimates are still within the amount that was originally approved for those projects.
But you're answering more than the question. So that's, you're giving good information, but the answer to this James question is line A is what the board has approved. We're still working on line B. That's the estimates at this point. That's the projects that the voters approved that we're still doing bids and negotiating and getting the details ready to bring to the board.
Okay, so line A includes the project, contracts and any contingency that the board has approved?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Verdine. Mr. Bassett, you made a comment, and we heard when we were in Washington, that refunding, advanced refunding is no longer permissible. Have we done much advanced refunding in the past here at Fort Bend ISD?
I can't speak to what happened before I got here. I suspect probably maybe some advanced refundings were done. I'm usually not a proponent of it because there's usually negative arbitrage and there's additional expenses associated with it. But the yield curve was such this past fall where we did bring to the board for approval the ability to advance refund some of the 2008 and some of the 2009 bonds on an advanced basis, which we did execute and we were able to save over $15 million. And just the market conditions at the time lent it where we just didn't want to leave that money on the table and so we executed that last fall. But that was the only advanced refunding we've done. The other refundings we've done since I've been here have all been on a current basis.
And how much should we save on the advanced refunding? Did you say 15?
15 million and a little bit above that. I don't have that number exactly in front of me.
Well, okay. I would just like to comment and thank, first of all, everyone for a very nice report, very well done, succinct and to the point. And I would also like to comment for the benefit of those in the audience that we have been able to manage our bond indebtedness very well these past several years utilizing the commercial paper, which is basically a short-term loan. A certain percentage of the portfolio is put in a variable rate and that's in order to take advantage of lower interest rates. We watch that to make sure it doesn't get to be more than, is it 25% of the total portfolio? And we're at 17.8 roughly. And because we have been able to do that and refund in this one instance, an advanced refunding, we save this $15 million plus the refunding of callable notes that we've done over the past, we have maintained a standard and force AA+ bond rating, which is important to us and important to our voters because if we do go out for a bond in November of this year, we're an attractive client for people that want to issue bonds and our stakeholders and taxpayers are going to pay less money in interest for any new projects that we may undertake. So that's very, very good. But in addition to that, because of your careful stewardship, we were able to lower our INS, our debt service tax rate by 4 cents. And that enabled us to increase the Emano tax rate from $1.4 to $1.6, which yielded an additional $18 million of sustainable funds that allowed us to give all of our teachers a raise, unlike the governor and lieutenant governor who promised to give the teachers a raise, but they're talking out of their hat because they can't do that and they have no money to give us. But we made that happen and lowered taxes at the same time. Overall, 2 cent tax decrease, pretty doggone good. So I was a little disheartened when Mr. George and Mrs. James and Mr. Verdine and I were in Washington and we learned of this portion of the new tax law that will prohibit us from advanced refunding. I'm a little encouraged by your comments that you don't like to use it very often, so sparingly. So who knows, maybe it will go away in a couple of years from now and it'll be another financial tool available to us to help us manage our INS tax rate. Anyway, I'll stop talking now, but I thought that was a very good report and thank you for, everyone, for all your hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Do we have any more questions? President toss in.
Thank you, Mr. Verdine. So I want to thank you, Mr. Rice, for saying that because those were all the notes that I wrote down. Because I wanted to say, first of all, thank you for your conservative, responsible debt management. Debt that, by the way, was approved by the voters and all the while we balance our budget because we have to. And so I agree with Mr. Rice and I thank you for making those comments because we, because of you guys, have been very responsible in managing our debt and have gotten near perfect ratings because of it and so I want to thank you for that. My other questions relate to the Small Business Initiative and I see that we are very close to our 25% goal, which I'm... to our 25 percent goal, which I'm, I'm very glad about. But my question is, do we expect to hit, at least hit, our 25 percent goal or exceed it by the time we get done with our bond program? Is that our expectation?
That is our expectation. We are bringing the, the final contracts to the Board within the next two months, and we will have everything under contract. So we hope to be there. I don't feel that we're, if we, if we exceed it, it won't be by much, because the amount of dollars that are left are actually very small. But we're going to make every attempt that we can to get as close to or, or exceed the 25.
Well, I appreciate that, and I also appreciate seeing the, the new efforts in building out that Small Business Initiative. I appreciate those. I think it's really important that we provide those opportunities. I don't, I don't know when you guys have the workshops planned, but it might be helpful for us as trustees to know when those are planned, so that if people in the community ask us about that, we can refer them to those workshops, because I know that we are sometimes asked about those things. So I want to thank you guys for that, and, and I think it was really good, succinct presentation as well. So thank you, guys. That's all.
Thank you, President Tosin. Mr. George?
Mr. Bassett, just a real quick question. Maybe I didn't understand it right. You said you're not a, a major supporter of refunding long-term debt? Is that, is that, that's what you said?
No, sir. What, I'm sorry. What I, what I meant is that there are two kinds of refundings. Refunding on a current basis or refunding on an advanced basis. Advanced refundings are a bit more complicated, and we pay a little bit more in fees for those. And then there's also negative arbitrage. I mean, I could bore you with a lot of, a lot of that, but economically, they usually don't pan out as well. But because the yield curve was, was good and beneficial to us, that's why we went ahead and did an advanced refunding. But I typically don't do it unless we have a strong business reason to, to do it. But I, you know, since we're, since I got the mic back, the one thing I can say is that the other two refundings we did were on, on a current basis. We've had three refunding since I've been here. The total savings is about $43.8 million in those, in those times. And that's something that's definitely helping us manage that curve and, and manage the, the debt rate.
Are they all current?
Two of them are current. One of them is advanced.
Yeah, I, I will maybe talk to you in person to understand, learn a little bit more about it, and you know, because I'd like to know more about it. Thank you, thank you very much.
No problem.
Thank you, Mr. George. I had just two really quick questions here. One of them is, is do we have a system currently in place for feedback from vendors? I know Mr. Rice has asked that in the past, so do we have a way of gathering information to improve our process in regard to the Small Business Initiative?
We do, we do receive feedback through our Small Business Coordinator. They do have her contact information, and that is how feedback comes nowadays, through her. And then we've got some survey questionnaires that they fill out after the survey.
Okay.
They tell us if, if the topics are appropriate, if they think that we are really touching on what they want to hear or learn, or if they have any suggestions.
So those have been useful to us, I would assume?
Yes, sir.
Good, thank you. And then my next is, is we had mentioned there was 1,400 new vendors in 2017. Approximately, do we have any idea of how many were in 2016 or any of the previous years? Were they half that or a third of that, or?
We could go back and look. I couldn't tell you right now.
No problem. Once again, thank you for the presentation. Do we have any more questions? We good? Okay. On to the next information item, C1, our district financial report. Dr. Dupree?
Yes, we provided this information to the Board in advance. I guess, Steve, you want to go ahead and talk through that briefly?
So, yes, sir, thank you. So we, we have the, we sent out the financials. We did receive some questions on them. And this was the second quarter financial report, which took us through December 31st. It, it includes, you know, information pretty much on all our funds, including our investment report. We, we usually provide a, you know, set of highlights at the, at the, the front of it, and we included some of that in, in the memo. We did receive some questions over the weekend that we, that we passed on, but I'll be happy to, to take any questions that, that y'all have on the, on the financials. I mean, it's, I don't know if you want me to go through 100, you know, the, all the pages, so.
No, we don't.
Do we have any questions, Mrs. James?
Yes, Mr. Bassett, I, I had sent a question earlier about the Health, Healthcare Fund. I can't, I'm trying to locate it. Do you, could you tell me where, what page it's on in here?
Yes, ma'am.
And then could you give us a little status update?
The Health Fund is on page 14 of the report, and so I'm not sure which page that is of the book. I think it's on page 20 of the book. But how we're doing, I mean, so we did lose some more money recently in the fund. We are anticipating, our outside consultants anticipating that we'll be just above break even in the, in the 2018 calendar year. I think we are going to be receiving more on our, on the pharmacy rebates that the Board authorized us whenever we were making a change from using United Healthcare directly with pharmacy. We're going using an outside company. But we're not going to start seeing those until later, until later in the year. And so we're not going to be able to book those as quickly as I would have hoped. But, but anyway, we have a lot of programs in place, and, you know, I'm just hoping that we're going to be able to break even. If not, we may need to make a, an investment from the general fund side, but, but hopefully we'll be able to put that off as long as possible.
Okay. So just to summarize, so we're down about $2 million at this point.
Yes, that's right.
Okay. And the healthcare.
But that's, so that's through the six months, but we're thinking the calendar year 2018, we think overall, calendar year 2018, that we'll break even.
Right. And our new plan that we voted on in the fall didn't go, doesn't, didn't go into effect until the 1st of January, so this is still holdover from the previous.
Yes, ma'am.
Setup. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mrs. Halliger?
Yes, thank you. Quick question on page 13. You mentioned in a, a note here that budgets not prepared for facility rentals, but facility rental revenue is lower in the current year due to approximately $70,000 of rental income that was lost?
Yeah, we lost rental income because of Harvey. Okay? You know, we weren't able to rent out a lot of our facilities, you know, during those, during those two, two weeks, you know, 11 days. And so that, that did impact, that did impact our, our numbers.
Right. So could you show me where the, maybe I missed it in here, but where the actual projection for rental income was going to be?
Well, in, in these financials, we don't actually do a projection. This is just actuals. So, so the purpose of this, that you're seeing on page 13, just shows our actuals for half of year, okay? And comparing the, our year-to-date for the current year versus the year-to-date from the prior year over the, over the same time period. So comparing six months this year versus six months last year. And so this doesn't include a, an annual projection. It is just, you know, what, what happened in those six months.
Yeah, that's just quite a lot, yeah. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mrs. James?
Just one more, since Mrs. Halliger brought it up about my, about Hurricane, or it came up about Harvey. What other cash flow implications have we had, or what's our, the impact, I guess, of the hurricane, and how's that affected our, our cash flow?
So we've had 7.1 million of cash paid out and, and other bills that we're waiting to pay. And so that's 7.1 million. We've received 5.3 million from insurance proceeds on Want Seguin. And so overall, the net impact hasn't been massive, okay? But we, we are anticipating, you know, more, more bills from Seguin. We will be giving the Board an update on where we stand with, with FEMA and insurance in, in more detail when, when, when we're going to be back in March.
So just piggybacking off that question real quick. So do you expect there could be a possibility that we could get more funds in the future?
I, I mean, that's the whole, that's the whole point, sir, FEMA. I mean, we, we hope. Now, this is, honestly, this is my first FEMA rodeo. I, I wasn't here when, when Ike and whatever else, I was in San Antonio. So this is my first experience with FEMA. But we've been going through the process. We have some folks on staff that have experienced with FEMA. So we've been going through and meeting the deadlines and submitting all of our, all of our work. And so hopefully, we'll, we'll have most of what's not covered by insurance, you know, covered, covered by FEMA.
That's great. Thank you. Mrs. Halliger, you have another question?
I don't have a question.
Great. Any more? We good? We are now going to convene in closed set, wait, one second, I'll, I'll back up. Thank you very much, once again, for this presentation. Thank you for being so thorough. And we are now going to convene in closed session under the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code 551, for the purpose of a private consultation with the Board's attorney on any or all subject matters authorized by law. And we will be back. Thank you.
Problem.